But we're glad to be here. Before we start, Councilman Young had to make an announcement. Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take an opportunity for the members, intern that's been kind of a staple in the office for the last couple of months. DM's been with us for a while now. He's been one of the -- not only is he an amazing advocate, he also has just become a presence in the office that, one, calming, and two, just your expertise and your interest in the work that we've been doing over the last few months has been amazing. You've been an asset, and sorry to lose you, but I know you're moving on to better things, and a full-time job rather than a part-time internship. So congratulations. You'll always be a friend here at the Baltimore County Council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Young, and good luck to you, dear. Okay. Item one is Bill 4-2-24. Councilman Catch, zoning regulations, signs, portable signs. Councilman Catch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes. Right ahead, Councilman Catch.
Thank you. Bill 4-2-4 clarifies our current law. Right now, you are an individual or is not allowed to post a sign on a county right-of-way. So what this bill does, it clarifies the law to include the sandwich board types of signs, which are becoming along York Road to be a traffic hazard. I guess about a month ago, I was driving south on York Road near Cranbrook Road, at the intersection with Cranbrook Road, and there was a couple people on the sidewalk, which is right next to the road, and they had the sandwich boards and actually were leaning into York Road, to the point where I had to swerve to avoid them. So what this is doing, what this bill does is it just makes it certain that besides the permanent signs that you put in the ground on a pole, which you can't do on county-owned right-of-way, that this include the sandwich board types of signs as well. Now, this does not in any way bar political signs because of the Supreme Court's ruling of some years ago. So I, this is simply to take away a, an area where there is some uncertainty as to what is allowed and what isn't allowed in, on county right-of-way. Now, this section of York Road I'm talking about, York Road has two lanes on either side and a turn lane in the middle. There is no space for parking. So when you have two lanes traveling south on York Road, as happened to me, and you have people right on the sidewalk, which is right next to the paved road, leaning into the road, you have a traffic hazard there, and I would like to resolve this so that we don't have this danger any longer. On top of it, this is a situation where a one business, which is located on York Road, has some competition, I guess, well, around the corner. You can't see the competition, actually. And the, so they have sandwich boards out in front of the one business advertising the other business on the side road. And to me, that's not exactly competition as we know it. So I think Mr. Karszewski is on the line in case for questions, because I'm not sure how long I can go on without coughing. And I hope to be back next week. I've had this flu for three weeks now, and all I can tell people is please get the flu shot. I forgot to do it, and this is the end result. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Councilman Catch? Okay. Hearing none. We have one speaker for this item. Is that correct, Ms. Bel Castro?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As Councilman Catch said, Mr. Karszewski.
Go ahead, Mr. Karszewski.
Good afternoon, Chairman Potoka, members of the County Council. My name is David Karszewski. I'm an attorney with Venable LLP here in Towson. I'm speaking in support of Council Bill Number 4-24. The purpose of this bill, as Councilman Catch already mentioned, is to clarify what is the definition of a portable sign and to clarify that certain portable signs are not allowed within a public street right-of-way. This legislation has, would have countywide applicability, and here's an example of the focus of it. You park your car at a retail establishment along any public road in Baltimore County, including some of the most highly traveled, like Baltimore National Pike, Liberty Road, Reisterstown Road, York Road, Bel Air Road. You're parked on private property intending to enter a store on the same site as a patron, and someone hired by another off-site business interrupts you. This person is trying to persuade you not to go to the store where you were parked. They're standing in, they're standing in a road right-of-way, but they're asking you to instead go somewhere else to do what, to do what you're trying to do on this property. This activity is a nuisance. It shouldn't be allowed. This legislation will clarify the existing sign regulations and make clear that portable commercial signs for an off-site business cannot be held or carried within a public right-of-way next to private property. This legislation should be passed by the County Council for a number of reasons. It is illegal to use off-site signage for commercial advertisement for a business located elsewhere. Also, it's illegal, and this bill clarifies, that portable commercial signage cannot be held, carried, spin in a public right-of-way, which is not a good thing because proliferation of this type of sign, as Councilman Catch alluded to, would result in a significant amount of sign clutter and downgrade the appeal of our commercial roadways. Also, the bill will eliminate the hazard, will eliminate safety hazards to motorists who drive along these roads and are distracted by people carrying these types of commercial signs next to a roadway. Please vote in favor of Bill 4-24. This legislation is entirely consistent with the goals of the sign regulations, which include the elimination of excessive signage, improvement of the quality of the county's commercial corridors, and the elimination of signs that are unsightly and distract drivers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Karszewski. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Mr. Karszewski? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you so much, and we'll move on to the next bill. The next bill is Bill 5-24, sponsored by Councilman David Marks, and this is zoning regulations capping residential growth in Greenlee. Catherine Marks?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As most of you know, Greenlee is a master-planned community located along White Marsh Boulevard east of Ebenezer Road, and it was established in 2013, and I think has been very successful in attracting residents and businesses and showcasing excellent urban design principles. Unfortunately, right now, the amount of growth that is allowed in Greenlee could go up to 9,000 units. The Essex Middle River Civic Council, and you're going to hear from President Bob Bendler shortly, approached the developer about possibly putting a cap on future residential growth, and that's what this bill does. It's a request from that community association with the support of the developers of Greenlee that would place an overall cap of 3,300 units in Greenlee, which still allows for some development. There's interest in getting a grocery store at this location and other businesses. Also, there's definitely a goal for the county of making sure that our growth is done in a smart and intelligent way, but at the same time preventing rampant overdevelopment in this part of the county. So I'm pleased to submit this legislation, and you will hear from the two witnesses. It has broad support from both the developers and the major community association in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Councilman Marks? Okay. Thanks. And it looks like we have two speakers. Ms. Bel Castro, could you call the speakers, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Patricia Malone, who is here in person.
Good afternoon, Chairman Potoka, members.
Good afternoon.
You can't hear me without it, and I'm not exactly quiet. My name is Patricia Malone, also with Venable LLP, as Mr. Karszewski was also. I'm here to speak in favor of Bill 5-24 and provide a little bit of background, although Councilman Marks did a good job. The bill pertains solely to the MD-43 overlay district. It would put a cap on residential development within the district. Greenlee is, consists of almost 1,000 acres, which is located between Bird River Road and Eastern Boulevard and on both sides of Route 43. It was actually established, and the legislation was supportive of this development because of the cost of Route 43 and to expand that portion of Baltimore County. The district allows for a balanced mix of employment uses, commercial uses, and then residential development. Somerset Construction St. John Properties, who are the developers, have maintained a good relationship with the community through the leadership of Essex Middle River Civic Council. The members of the Civic Council did express some concern over the total residential development that could result at Greenlee. The developers, in working with Mr. Bendler, agreed to a cap on the number of residential units within the MD-43 overlay district, and they also agreed to ask Councilman Marks to add the cap to the regulations governing the overlay district. This bill would only impose a cap. It does not give the developers more development potential. I need to make that clear because there's apparently been some confusion in the community that the developer is getting something out of this. They're actually giving something up. Now, it's in return for the good relationship with the community. The community has been very supportive of the development. But I just want to make clear for anyone listening that this is to impose a cap, and there is nothing else that this legislation does. So we would ask for your support of this legislation, and Mr. Bendler also is here to give his side of the story.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts for Ms. Malone?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Robert Bendler, who is here in person.
Mr. Chairman and members of the County Council, it's always a pleasure to be here. I am Robert Bendler, President of the Essex Middle River Civic Council. Civic Council has testified before you many times. I think you realize it represents a large number of community associations in the Essex and Middle River area. The Essex Middle River Civic Association strongly supports Bill 5-24, introduced by Councilman Marks, to place a cap on the number of residential units allowed under the current zoning on the Greenlee mixed-use development. Several concerns, serious concerns, have been raised regarding the number of residential units that the current overlay district would allow. This bill would substantially reduce that number. It is our understanding that the current infrastructure can adequately support the amount of residential units that this cap will allow, and we are pleased that the passage of this bill will restrict and control future residential development beyond the cap. We appreciate Mr. Marks, Councilman Marks, introducing this bill on our behalf, and we appreciate the developers of Greenlee, both St. John's and Somerset, for their understanding and cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendler. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Bendler?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bendler, I have one.
Pardon?
I have a question for you.
Okay.
First, I want to thank you for what you do for the Essex Middle River Civic Council. You've been a warrior for fighting for communities since I first got to know you when you were Deputy Director of Planning many years ago. You were on the forefront.
Many years ago.
Many years ago, but we're still here. So, you know, I've always thought you to be a wise man and always really admired how you addressed tough issues when you were administrator in the planning department, now as a community leader. I guess the question I have for you, Bob, is how did you do it? Because usually, we come into these situations where the community and the developer is, are at odds, and here it seems like you guys are working on a parallel path in cooperating with one another. What's the secret sauce? What's the magic?
The secret is to have a cooperative developer. And in the case of Somerset and St. John's Property, they reached out to the communities from the beginning, from the time that Greenlee was first thought of by Mr. Caminitz, to the time that the overlay, the 43 overlay district was originally proposed. It was a hand-in-glove arrangement, or hand in hand. They were very open with us. They knew what the communities wanted. They worked as hard as they could to meet our desires, and they have produced a high-quality product that Middle River is proud of. So as we go back to them for these type of things, they are always very willing to work with us in the best interest of the community because they are a big part of our community, and that's, that's the key to success, having good cooperative land owners, property owners, developers, who work with communities. And we're reasonable, so that's it.
Well, it all makes sense to me. You should write a little manual on best practices.
Right. My best practice is going to be really retire.
Thank you, Mr. Bendler. That was a good one. Okay. Do we have any other speakers, Ms. Bel Castro?
No, Mr. Chair. That concludes all the speakers today.
Okay. Our next item will be contract of sale for 1441 Rolling Road, and we have Ms. Faith Thomas from the Real Estate Compliance Division.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers.
Good afternoon, Ms. Thomas.
The administration is requesting approval of a contract to acquire approximately 0.348 acres of land for $75,820 to remediate the encroachment of the county-owned playground at Western Hills Park onto neighboring private property. The current owner is Judith Kathkoff. The property is located at 1441 Road in Catonsville. It's zoned DR 3.5. It will be used as a playground area and additional parking, parkland at Western Hills Park. There were two appraisals. Everett Bennett Benfield Advisors and Associated Appraisers LLC completed appraisals. One was $49,280 and $45,200 respectively. After negotiations, the county and the property owner accepted a negotiated price of $75,820. The county recognized that it had been using the property for some time, and that had the county been leasing the land, there would have been an associated cost. The office also advised that if the county were to instead relocate the equipment, there would be costs associated with a new surface area, drainage, and restoration of the private property, and that resulted in the value that was associated with this project.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Ms. Thomas? Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm familiar with the playground. I believe I was a kid when they installed it. There were some questions from the auditors. One was, when was the playground installed? But I already know when that was done. So in the '90s. But I guess the, we're encroaching on private property. I also know the Kathkoffs. They haven't brought this up to me. I read it in the notes earlier. How did we find out about this? And, Mr. Chairman, either Stacy or Ms. Rogers, or?
I know the background.
Go ahead, Ms. Rogers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers. This piece of the property was a result of the discussions with the community and leadership. I think you were still at the state at the time. You know, we went out to visit, and in order to try to do some additional work, that we needed more space, particularly if the community center, a proposed community center, is developed. That's how it was discovered in terms of who actually owned what part, because we had been mowing the lawn, et cetera. But at the point that we wanted to look at the footprint of a new community center, that's how it was discovered. So the two points, how was this encroachment identified, and how did this situation occur, and what went wrong procedurally? Nothing went wrong procedurally. We found out that the portion of that land was actually private in terms of where the property lines were.
I imagine if it was anything other than a park, the private property owner probably would have had a problem, maybe.
In the discussions with the community about the expansion and what we want to do there, that's how it was all discovered. And this has been years, you know, well before where we are now.
Right. No worries. I just wanted to clarify, familiar with the property and glad we've cleared it up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Any other questions on this item for Ms. Thomas? So Ms. Thomas, stay right there, because I think you have the next item, which is accept donation parcel of land, 2005 Bosley Road.
Yes, thank you for letting me move up from the back of the agenda. We are presenting a resolution that would authorize the county to accept a donation of an approximately 0.23 acre parcel of land located near 2005 Old Bosley Road in Lutherville Timonium from IH Hammerman III at Al, valued at $17,000. The office advised that the transfer of the land, which is adjacent to county local open space across from the Warren Elementary School Recreation Center, is intended to be used for recreational purposes. And again, this is a donation.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Ms. Thomas? Okay. Councilman Catch, I think this is in your district, so it's a nice acquisition.
Absolutely. Very nice acquisition. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
Next item, we have Inspector General from Baltimore County, Kelly Madigan, and Ms. Madigan is going to discuss a contract. Good afternoon, Ms. Madigan.
Good afternoon, Chairman Potoka. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Potoka and members of County Council. I want to begin by thanking Madam County Administrative Officer for expediting this contract. It's much appreciated on behalf of the office as well as members of council for considering this request. The OIG is requesting approval of a part-time legal contract with Karpinski, Cornbrooks, and KARP. As you are aware, the recommendation by the Blue Ribbon Commission was for the OIG to have independent counsel win and only win. A conflict arises between either the Office of the Inspector General, the Office of Law, and/or the administration. This contract was the result of a competitive RFP. The contract is for one year with four one-year renewals. There is a cap each fiscal year of $150,000. It's a blended hourly rate that increases each fiscal year, and the money has been earmarked both for FY 2024 as well as FY 2025. With respect to the conflict piece, as I testified before the Blue Ribbon Commission as well as the bill a couple of months ago in December, should a conflict arise, that's kind of the threshold question, a discussion would have to occur between myself and the county attorney to declare that a conflict does exist. My preference would be that this would be done in writing to have backup documentation before the IG would be able to utilize the services under this contract. Also, though, if myself and the county attorney meet and I believe there's a conflict and he disagrees with the written justification, we could still proceed to use the contract, just like if I don't think there's a conflict and the county attorney believes there's a conflict with his written justification, we would then be able to use this contract. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Madigan. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Ms. Madigan? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you again, Ms. Madigan.
Thank you. Nice seeing everyone.
Next item is Anthony Russell, Tony Russell, and we have a couple of contracts from the Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon.
Councilmembers. DPWT is in front of you tonight to ask for the not to exceed on two of our contracts to be increased. One contract is with JMT, and the other contract is with Wilson T. Ballard. Both of these firms do on-call engineering, traffic engineering workforce, which includes everything from signal design, geometric design, roundabout design, and traffic studies and data collection.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any questions for Mr. Russell? Councilman Young? Oh, no.
Sorry. Good to see you, Mr. Russell. You mentioned about roundabout design, and, pardon me, I was looking at something else when you started speaking. I thought it was a little longer. You've had these folks on contract already, right?
Correct. It was approved in, it was approved by the council in 2021, and it went through the PSSC Board.
Got it. Okay. I appreciate you taking a look, Mr. Chairman, taking a look at my face. I was, when you mentioned roundabout design, I was, I didn't think we had somebody on retainer for that type of thing when it was explained to me in terms of a process of when a request is made for the potential of using a space for a roundabout, or whether it's eligible. They've talked about having to go through a procurement process to identify an organization to...
These folks can come in on initial design, on bigger stuff that we can't do in-house, similar to the Honeyco. That's, you know, that's something that would need to be handled by outside firm, and then we would bring folks like this in to help us with the design of that.
Right. I didn't, also, don't want to get into the weeds on it. It was a sticking point. I just got stuck on it. I just want to, so for, it doesn't necessarily mean if somebody requests, like a council member or somebody requests potential use of a roundabout in a particular area, these folks wouldn't, would only be used if it went to the point of design.
Only if it went to the zone, and most of this, the bigger studies would go out, and most of the stuff we do now, you know, is in-house.
Understood. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Young. And we have one more item for Ballard. And we have one more item for Ballard.
Yeah, that was the same as JMT.
Okay, got you. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Next, we have our county attorney, Mr. James Benjamin, to discuss a legal contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a second amendment to a contract with Nelson Mullins, Robert, and Scarborough LLP, who is currently serving as counsel for the county with respect to Fair Labor Standards Act class action litigation in federal court. This litigation is currently pending before the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit. The proposed amendment, which commences upon council approval, increases the maximum compensation by $50,000 from $1.2 million to $1,250,000 for the entire contract term. The contract commenced November 1, 2021. On June 6, 2022, the council approved the first amendment to the contract. Litigation in this matter, which has been complex and time-intensive, has been far more extensive in scope and cost than initially contemplated, requiring an increase in the value of the contract. All other terms and conditions of the contract remain the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts for Mr. Benjamin? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Mr. Benjamin.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And next, we'll have Ms. Deb Schindel, Chief of Property Management. And she has a couple of contracts, looks like four contracts.
Good afternoon, Council Chair and members of the County Council. I have a few contracts that I'd like to present this evening. My first one is the administration is requesting an approval of a contract for Freeland Hoist and Crane, Inc., for the labor material, tools, and equipment and supervision needed for an annual maintenance inspection and repair of overhead cranes and related services throughout the county. The contract total sum of compensation will be $236,929.66 during the life of the contract. It is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. It was competitively bid. We chose them because of the, obviously, best value, best qualified, low bid, and experience. For those who are interested, we have approximately 213 cranes and hoists throughout the county at 77 locations. I can take any questions on this contract if you'd like.
Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts for Ms. Schindel? Okay, next contract.
Thank you. The administration is requesting approval of a contract for Master Care Floor, Inc., Miller Floor Company, AKA as Miller Sports Construction, and Young Floor Services and Remodeling Company for all the necessary labor, equipment, material supervision, tools, and equipment related to performing routine repairs, replacements, and refinishing and relining of wooden floors throughout Baltimore County. This was a competitive bid, but through cooperative agreement with Baltimore County Public School System. This is a contract that will go through April 30, 2028. We have an MBE goal on this of 15%. And one of our contractors, Young Floor, is actually a prime who is an MBE. We estimate to use no more than $141,896.6 on this contract.
Thank you, Ms. Schindel. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Ms. Schindel? Okay, Ms. Schindel, next contract, please.
Thank you. The administration is requesting an approval of a contract for Dynamic General Contracting LLC, City Ruth Corporation, and Simon Unlimited for labor materials, tools, and equipment and supervision for on-call roofing services throughout the county. We have a not to exceed of $2,000,000, yeah, $2,29,564.36 on the life of the contract. It is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. We have a contract MBE goal of 23% on this contract. We have one competitive bid. It did go out to competitive bid. And then we have two competitively negotiated bids for the three. And we chose all of them for the best quality, best value, experience, and low bid.
Got you. I have a question, Ms. Schindel. On the MBE goals, I noticed that they're different for each contract. So question one is, how do we define what the MBE goal is? And secondary, second question is, do we meet those goals on MBE for contracts? And does, do we count on the contractor to do that in the submission or after, or when he's actually, he or she is actually doing the work?
So on the MBE office, actually, when we have every contract that we're getting out to put out for bid, the MBE office actually looks at it and goes in and determines how many MBE companies that are actually out there to provide this service. And then they actually put the goal on based on how many companies and where they are and what they think our goal should be. And then it is the goal of the life of the contract, and we do monitor it in the MBE office to make sure that these companies are utilizing, and I know Madam Ege probably wants to jump in too, monitoring them and ensuring that they are complying and meeting the goals per task.
Yes, Ms. Rogers.
Just to add a little more clarity to it, this is a subdivision of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. This is a big part of the work that they've done the last few years. Ms. Peoples Brown and her team are in the discussions on the front end with all of the contracts. They work on a weekly basis with the Office of Procurement to identify what is a reasonable goal for the prime, and then they talk about subprimes as well. The second place where that discussion occurs is with me. When all contracts that are being prepared to come for the council's consideration, we have a pre-meeting to talk about the MBE/WBE goals. And this is one of the things I'm very proud of. As we shared with you in our discussion of DEI, when we arrived, very few contracts had MBE/WBE goals. But now you'll note that they do because we've educated our departments about the requirement. And we moved from 15% where it had been, I think it was, Kevin, was it 20 years it was at 15%? To a little under 23% MBE/WBE goals. And in January, the county executive issued an executive order increasing that goal between now and 2026 to 30%, which is more in alignment with federal and state guidelines. You'll recall, you'll recall at the state level, every department had to focus on this. But yes, the monitoring part occurs through a dashboard system that we had that the county purchased before we arrived, but they had not purchased the monitoring component. When I arrived, we went back to the vendor. This is Prism, a nationally-used monitoring tool, best-practice tool, and we purchased the monitoring component. So we do have it in place to monitor the goals for primes and subs. And the subs even have the ability, when the primes put in their information, the subs have the ability to say, yes, this is accurate, or no, it's not. If they say, no, it's not, it automatically generates a query that Ms. Peoples Brown, People Brown's staff have to investigate.
Yeah. Ms. Rogers, do we meet those goals? Or we achieve like the 30% when it's in the contract?
I can check with her what the percentage is, but it's a lot better off, we're a lot better off with respect to the goals than we were in 2019 when we arrived. Again, I encourage everyone to take a look at the disparity study that we initiated. Well, it was underway when we arrived, but it was finished under our, under the first term. And it is public on the public website of the county to show the movement over the last couple of years, you know, from 15% to 23%. It is also reflected in Ms. Peoples Brown's report that she sent you all a copy of in December, the annual, well, the annual DEI report, which talks about our work in that area.
Got you. One final question. So in looking at the flooring contract, our goal, our MBE/WBE goal is 15%. In looking at the roofing contract, it's a much substantially higher, let's see, I thought it was 30% for some reason.
The roofing was 23, sir.
23, okay.
And 15 for the flooring.
Is the assumption that there are more roofers in this area that might, might be fit within the MBE/WBE classification than there are people that do floor work?
It changes from contract to contract. That is the case. That's the rudic. But I will make sure that when Ms. Peoples Brown and her staff come to talk to you all to brief you on exactly what the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion does, because there are three separate parts of that organization, I'm sure she can talk to you about the rudic. The rudic uses standard best practices in establishing goals. And one of the things I'll say is, you know, an accomplishment, when we arrived, there was one person doing goals, and they were hand calculating them. Now, it's a part of the tool that allows target goals to be established based on an algorithm.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to kind of veer off on that little detour. And we have one more contract. Ms. Schindel, correct, Carpentry?
Carpentry, yes, sir. And I will go into a little detail about the MBE goal, because this is a little different, and I'll explain why. The administration is requesting approval of a contract for Colossal Contractors, Inc., Earnest Contractors, Inc., Hays Construction Company, and Total Contracting, Inc., for on-call carpentry services throughout Baltimore County. There is not to exceed of $13,561,91 for the entire life of the contract. This is a one-year with a four, one-year renewal. We have an MBE goal of 25% per task with a goal on this contract. And four, we have four vendors, and three of those vendors are MBE primes. So they are MBE primes. The reason that this was such, the goal was set a lot lower, and at 20%, 25% per task, is because just what we were talking about, there are a large amount of contractors for carpentry in this area that are MBE vendors. And so we wanted to set our goals higher to enforce and make sure that there was more opportunity for the MBE to get that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Schindel. Yes, Ms. Rogers?
That's another one of our metrics is on primes and subprimes. The county's percentage of vendors that we do business with, the percentage increase of primes as opposed to just subprimes. And I'm very pleased to say we have increased that amount as well. About two years ago, we did a outreach to the small minority business contractor community. Ms. Peoples Brown and I worked on this together with our contractor who did the disparity study, which is a national, this woman is a national expert on this. And the disparity study recommended to us that she, that we do direct outreach to the MBE/WBE community to understand why there were vendors that did not do business with the county, had not done business, had done business, and then stopped doing business to understand that more. And as a result of those discussions, we've been able to assist businesses a lot more who want to do business with the county but found it difficult to navigate the county's process.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
We've worked a lot in this area, and I'm very proud of this work. It's real work.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Any other questions for Ms.?
I have a question. The Prism system, Ms. Rogers, what does that do? That helps us track MBE participation? Is that correct?
It's a tool, you said?
The Prism, you said there's...
It's Prism.
Right. And what does that tool do? It tracks our participation goal?
It's, it's, the vendors and contractors are enrolled in Prism. Each contract that we have has a dashboard for that particular contract, the prime and the subs. And it has the ability to look at what the goals are and whether they're meeting the goals. We did not have that monitoring capability prior to this administration. But Prism, Ms. Peoples Brown, I'm taking notes on the things that I would like her to share with you. The vendor, who is a minority vendor, early morning software, is the, is a proprietary software that is in many jurisdictions across the country. Prism is a tool, a proprietary tool, that we contracted, Baltimore County contracted years ago with. It was not a, we didn't bring Prism here, it was already here. But what we did was invest in the monitoring module. We upgraded and invested in the monitoring module so we could better, so that we could better monitor. And we increased the monitoring staff. Like I said, there was one person working in DEI when we got here. Well, small and minority business, let alone DEI holistically in terms of what that portfolio of work, diversity, equity, inclusion work entails. Now it has, you know, blossomed, if you will, beyond small and minority businesses. So Ms. Peoples Brown, when she does return, she doesn't return to mid, until mid-March from her maternity leave, but she is preparing a comprehensive briefing for you all. She's excited about sharing the work that that team does.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
You're quite welcome.
Counselman Jones?
Yeah, I guess wanted to just acknowledge the fact that Ms. Peoples Brown came in during our council meeting, was it the work session? Last week.
Council meeting.
And I know she's on maternity leave, but I think it speaks to her level of dedication and how much she cares about the work that she's doing. So I didn't want that to go unnoticed. So when you do speak with her, I guess let her know that we here in the County Council really appreciate her dedication and commitment.
She's probably listening.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rogers. Any of the members have any other questions, comments, or thoughts for Ms. Rogers or Ms. Schindel? Hearing none. We'll move to the next item. Okay, next item is the fire department. We have Chief Jennifer Albertutz.
Good evening, Chairman Patoka, member of the County Council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Centennial Protection Group to conduct personal history background investigations for fire department recruit class applicants. Note, the police department will continue to conduct the criminal background history on our investigations on our new applicants. The contract commences upon council approval, continues for one year, and will renew automatically with four one, four additional one-year periods, with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term, an additional 120 days. The contract provides that compensation may not The contract provides that compensation may not exceed $337,000 for the entire five-year, four-month term, including the renewal and extension periods. Take any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts for Chief Hutz? Councilman Jones?
Yes, sir.
It's good to see you, Chief Hutz.
Good to see you, Councilman.
And I guess wanted to thank you for making me feel like I was coming out of retirement by having me show up at the firehouse before 7:00 last Friday. But it was good to see you, and it was nice to congratulate Captain Cook on his retirement.
Yes. Thank you for being there.
No, I thank you and the chief for being there as well. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Chief Hutz? Okay, hearing none, thank you so much.
All right.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me acknowledge. I did want to address the question, a portion of the question that the auditors requested about, has the lack of a contract for these services affected the timing of any of the classes? Chief Hutz, Assistant Chief Hutz, if you want to address it. But I want to give you another update on other activities that we worked on within the enterprise that helps with processing.
Certainly.
Sure. So the short answer is no, it has not impacted the hiring of the classes. The department projects plans and budgets for a minimum of two classes per year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And so we were able to get into our conditional offers of employment and offer up to 80 applicants a conditional offer to start the background check prior to the expiration of the current contract. So they are in process now. So we'll be able to hire off of that list in anticipation of the new contract.
And what I wanted to add, one of the things that I worked on when I arrived was on the fingerprinting side of it. On the fingerprinting side, the county had primarily had the police department having the connectivity to the State Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, a T-1 line direct into CGIS. We were able to work with the State Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services to get a second T-1 line dedicated to HR, OHR. It took us a while to get it straightened out, but I knew that it was possible because on the state side, the local departments of social services across the state are able to have their own T-1 lines for fingerprinting for foster families. So now that we have the T-1 line there, the police department can focus on public safety fingerprinting for fire, police, sheriff, and corrections, while OHR can now focus on the rest of the enterprise, the general government. So we've divided off that workload, which is definitely helping. We were able to help the school system with the bus crisis. Baltimore County general government did the fingerprinting for the school system for the buses. So that was another advantage that we were able to negotiate and work out in this administration.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. And thank you, Chief Hutz. Councilman Jones?
Now, Madam Mayo and Chief Hutz, whatever you can do to, and I appreciate all your efforts to expedite the onboarding process. Clearly, there are so many vacancies abound. We're not the only ones out hiring people. And sometimes it's just a matter of who offers them the job first. So it's very important that we do everything in our process to expedite that onboarding process. So I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Thank you, Chief Hutz.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Okay. Next item, this is the penultimate item, and we have Marcia Williams from Housing, from the Department of HCD.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. I'm here to present a request for payment in lieu of taxes for Essex Two Limited Partnership. Essex Two Limited Partnership has requested payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot for 209 senior housing project units located at 1,000 Franklin Avenue in Essex, Maryland. Essex Two Limited Partnership will acquire from Essex Nonprofit Housing Corporation, who's currently the owner, which is a general partner of the new entity that is being set up to improve 209 rental housing development thereon for elderly households who incomes does not exceed 60% of the area medium income for Baltimore metropolitan area. The pilot that they are looking, they have requested is a 10-year pilot. And the first five years, the payment will be $300, with each year with a 3% escalation. And a year six to 10, it will increase to $400 per unit with the annual escalation of 3%. It will change if it's transferred or sold, subject to the covenants of the pilot agreement for the seven to 10-year pilot period. Payments are due annually in arrears. The tax payments shall be made prior to payment of any debt service on this property.
Ms. Williams, any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts to share with Ms. Williams? Councilman Jones?
Ms. Williams, I want to thank you so much for joining me last night to talk housing. And I think your presence really made all the difference in the world, your level of expertise and your commitment to Baltimore County and housing folks made all the difference in the world. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Any of the members have any additional questions, comments, or thoughts? Thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome.
Okay. And our last item, and we have saved the best for last, is Councilman Young amending the rules and procedures for the Baltimore County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 624, amending the rules and procedures for the Baltimore County Council. This is on second consideration, because we held off on the vote for the purpose of having a second work session to discuss and offer any amendments. Also, take the opportunity to point out that written into the bill for making sure that council staff can also make sure that we meet the expectations of the bill for posting amendments. It doesn't go into effect until April 1st, even though we'll be voting on it next Monday. So there will be a delay, so we will be conducting business as if it's in place, but also giving a grace period for staff to make sure that we are making sure the website is in the appropriate order so that folks can find amendments when they're posted. So this would be considered, the resolution is on second consideration during the work session. And since the first work session, there were some recommendations and questions that turned into amendments. We haven't been able to post them yet. We will post those amendments so folks can see them. And that's also why there's an extension for when the bill goes into place, goes into effect, so that we can make sure that we're posting those amendments so folks can see them. So one of the amendments changes, there's a section where we clarify when the chairman introduces a bill and when he decides to withdraw a bill. We're keeping the language that refers to notifying the county executive within two hours if a bill or resolution that started with them is going to be removed. We took out the section about notifying them if we're not going to introduce something at a particular time so that we still have flexibility over the agenda. Just through a discussion from former chair folks, it made sense to keep that flexibility in the front end for agenda purposes and making sure that we're not forcing ourselves into putting too much business on the plate, but making sure that we are notifying if we're going to withdraw a bill, so it's not a surprise and not done at the very last minute. We also, just as we have today, we have Councilman Catch participating virtually. During the pandemic, I was not here, but serving the legislature, we changed our rules to allow for online participation and making sure that that was, there was a process to it, that we're following that process, and that everyone knew that we were above board on it. We have been also, the council followed a similar procedure when it came to doing things virtually. And when we moved back to meeting in person, we allowed for flexibility where needed, that one, folks can still participate in the meetings virtually, but also members, when need be, can participate. So we're making sure that there are rules associated with those virtual meetings that allow for the chair to call, a meeting to be held virtually in the case of an emergency, and their discretion, or there's a power outage, weather event, but allowing for our flexibility, one, that we're taking care of the public interest and safety, as well as the council members and staff. So we're just making sure that that's on paper and listed in our rules so that there's no question about how we are conducting business virtually now that that avenue has been opened up since the pandemic. I also just want to point out from conversation from folks that have reached out about the resolution. The reason that we've been doing it this way and we're doing this as a resolution is so that we could do this quickly. Over the last 14 months and these discussions that led to this resolution, there was talk about what we could change, what we couldn't change. Certain things are in the code that we couldn't change quickly. Resolution and changing our rules, we have the flexibility to do so. So what we did was work within what we already have in place, so we wouldn't have to put it to voters, which made this something that can be put into place right away rather than having to pass something that then would go up for referendum, because that would be the only way to change very specific procedures that these rules don't necessarily address. So that had been brought up in conversation about, why did we do it this way? Why didn't we change this or that? And some of those things that folks had talked about would have required it being put to referendum rather than changing our rules so that we could do this quickly and address not everything, but things that have been brought up over the last, even before I got here, that we think that we are all in lockstep in fixing and addressing and moving forward together. So with that, those are the two amendments that I know that we've discussed, but happy to answer any questions related to them.
Councilman Young, do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts for Councilman Young? Councilman Young, I just want to thank you for your efforts in this matter. You've not only seen the need to create transparency, but you've taken action after seeing the need. And you and I both have worked in state and local government, and I think we both, at least I'll admit, and you may agree with me, that one of the hardest things to do in state, local, and I would venture to say in federal government, is to change the way things have been done. And so thank you for making us a better council and a more transparent council in your efforts on this resolution.
Appreciate your partnership. And as we move forward also to the same tone for the public and the folks that are paying attention and watching, keep us honest with the new rules. And also, if there's something that you see that doesn't look familiar, because it's the way we've been doing it, reach out so that we can make sure that the new process that we're getting used to is also a process that you are getting used to as well.
Good work, Councilman Young. Okay, I think we have concluded our business for the day. Okay, well, thank you, everyone who has participated, and have a great evening.